Good morning and welcome to the December 13th Land Use Meeting of the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our Chaplain Commissioner, Cameron Cepeda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this time here today. We just thank you for your love and your mercy, Lord, on your people here of Hillsborough County. We thank you for the wisdom, Lord God, for all of the board members here, Lord, and we just thank you for this meeting today, and amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Grady or Mr. Gormley, I guess, are we going to review any changes?
Mr. Grady will run through the changes to the agenda. We have some on the printed agenda and one thing to note on the agenda. So I'll ask Mr. Grady to run through those changes for you now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. We do have a couple of changes to the agenda. I'll go through those and then go through the published withdrawals, continuances, and remands on the published agenda. First, two changes are regarding item I-1 and I-2 on page 11 of the agenda. At the time of filing the original agenda, the backup was not available, and that backup has been added to the agenda and is available for review. The other change is in the Commission items, item being added by Commissioner Owen, asking for a report by the county insurance office on the status of case number 21-CA-00487 and the impact of the motion to dismiss. Now I'll go through the published withdrawals and continuances, beginning on page three of the agenda. First item is item A-1, rezoning PD 18-08996. Staff is requesting this item be continued to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-2, rezoning PD 22-0562. Staff is requesting the item be continued to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-3, PRS 22-0657. This application is withdrawn by the applicant. Item A-4, PRS 22-0738. This application has been withdrawn by staff. Item A-5, special use LE 22-0920. This application is out of order to be heard and is being continued to the January 10th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-6, rezoning standard 22-0926. This application is being continued to the January 26th, 2023 ELCC public hearing at 6:00 p.m. to be heard concurrently with Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-09. Item A-7 is PRS 22-0937. This application is being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-8, PRS 22-0940. This application is being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-9, PRS 22-1006. This application is out of order to be heard and is being continued to the January 10th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-10, PRS 22-1040. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A-11, PRS 22-1084. This application is withdrawn by the applicant. Item A-12, PRS 22-1091. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A-13, PRS 22-1174. This application is continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-14, PRS 22-1372. This application is out of order to be heard and is being continued to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. Item A-15, PRS 22-1485. This application is withdrawn by the applicant. Item A-16, PRS 22-1487. This application is out of order to be heard and is being continued to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. And item A-17, PRS 22-1492. This application is being continued by the applicant as a matter of right to the January 10th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' land use meeting at 9:00 a.m. That concludes all changes, withdrawals, and continuances. Thank you.
Clear motion. Approve the changes.
So moved.
Second, motion now Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
My voting screen is not, does not appear to be working. But I am happy to vote yes.
Can we just register that? Register Commissioner Cohen as a yes vote.
We can edit the vote. Ballot's in carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now can we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. No comments, please accord your vote.
It's still stuck on the last vote.
You want to have a roll call vote until we get this fixed?
It should be back up, sir.
Yeah, I'm back.
Commissioners Cameron Cepeda and Myers? Is it out on your tablets?
Push.
On the green button.
Is this approved? Yeah.
Ballot's in carries seven to zero.
All right, so anyone that's present at Saunders for B item, your item's been approved. Before we begin our public hearings, I'd ask a clerk to administer the oath to anyone planning on speaking today.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Before we begin our E items, I'd like to take the opportunity to remind all the speakers, including those participating in person at Saunders Library and those participating remotely of our meeting participation process. When it's your turn to speak, I'll recognize you as a speaker. For those participating in person at Saunders Library, please remain seated until I've called upon you. Thank you. And one announcement, this will be our last land use meeting. We will have participation at Saunders Library, all in-person participation. We'll be here at County Center starting with our January land use meeting. So, Mr. Grady, you want to introduce the first E item?
The first item on this morning's agenda then is E1, is PRS application 22-1482. The applicant Spencer's Farms Incorporated. The project is located on the west side of Simmons Loop Road, northwest of the intersection of Big Ben Road and US 301. Commissioners, the request is to modify a condition that ties the timing of development within the project, the completion of a north-south roadway that traverses the project. The north-south roadway is sewn on that area right there. Basically, currently, the condition prohibits issuance of any building permits until such time as the road is completed. The request is to modify that condition to allow for the multifamily component of this project to be permitted to obtain building permits. However, no occupancy of any buildings will be permitted, and no surprestigance of occupancy shall be issued, temporary or otherwise, until construction of this segment of the new north-south roadway has been cleared and accepted for maintenance by Hillsborough County. Staff is recommending approval and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. As staff outlined, this is a minor modification to one condition in this existing approved PD. We're not changing density or intensity, and we're not modifying our requirement to build the off-site improvements. We're just recognizing the difference between single-family development and multifamily development. With single-family development, the horizontal infrastructure and the off-site infrastructure occurs long before the building permits for the first residential unit. However, with multifamily development, those horizontal and vertical building permits occur concurrently, with the net effect being the same, that the off-site improvements will be available concurrent with the development impact. And with that, we respectfully request your approval. Steve Henry of Lynx &amp; Associates, our transportation engineer, is here in the audience should there be any questions about that off-site improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett, for your brief presentation. Is there any proponent testimony?
Seeing none in the room?
Any opponent testimony?
No one in the room.
Okay.
Move approval?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, real quick, I want to confirm to Mr. Gormley, there'll be no TCOs that would be issued for this, right?
That is correct. The requirement is that the road be completed and ready for acceptance before any occupancy, temporary or permanent, is allowed of the multifamily units.
Okay, yeah, and I'm going to support this. I just, you know, I think sometimes these issues are kind of, the pot gets sweetened a little bit with saying, hey, we'll build this road. I don't want to make this something that we always do, but to me, the way I look at it is the developer kind of offered this. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to support it, but just, you know, I think we should be mindful of that.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, for your comments. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Grady.
The next item is E2, is PRS application 22-1494. The request is for a minor modification to a project located northwest of the corner of Soto Road and US 301 to allow for a third development option to develop 80,000 square feet of hospital medical offices. Michelle Heinrich with County Staff will provide a brief overview of the request.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. As you heard, this is a minor modification to property zone PD 18-0401, as most recently modified by PRS 21-0087. The site is currently approved for three development options, the first being around 53,000 square feet of CG zoning district uses, the second option being approximately 133,000 of CG zoning district uses, which must include a mini warehouse building vertically integrated with retailer office uses, and that is to appease a density bonus for vertical integration per the Comprehensive Plan. And the third option is for approximately 13,000 square feet of CG uses, which includes a 109 community residential home, I'm sorry, 109-bed community residential home. The applicant's are proposing to remove the third option and replace it with a hospital medical office use at a maximum of 80,000 square feet, and they are achieving that 80,000 square feet due to a flex of the OC 20 future land use category as permitted by the Comprehensive Plan. I would also note that under this modification, the applicant is also, for all development options, agreeing to provide a minimum 80-foot setback from the western PD boundary, and also for all development options to provide a 20-foot buffer with enhanced Type B screening along the western boundary. Staff did not identify any compatibility issues and received no objections from reviewing agencies. Planning Commission staff offered no objections to their flex request, and therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to proposed conditions. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Commissioners, I am. This is Alan Brown with Prevarian Companies. I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Good morning. I have a PowerPoint.
Good morning.
Yep, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Spazato. I'm a planner with Level Up Consulting. As Alan just mentioned, he is the applicant for the project and is available to answer any specific questions. We appreciate working with staff, especially Ms. Heinrich, and I think she's given an excellent overview of the project. I'm going to actually just jump to the fourth slide. We provided an illustration of the design intent, both from a layout and also architecturally. As Michelle mentioned, we're proposing a hospital, non-emergency, with a medical office. The medical office would be adjacent to 301. The plan also demonstrates the enhanced buffer and the building setback from the western property line. We're also proposing to consolidate the number of access points on 301 next slide. No objections, compatible, consistent, and approvable, subject to conditions, and we respectfully request approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any proponent testimony?
None in the room.
Any opponent testimony?
Not seeing any in the room.
Can we have a motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by, was that Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now we're on to our regular agenda. Mr. Grady, you want to introduce the first item?
The next item is F1, rezoning standard 22-1302. This is a project that is located on the east side of Highview Road, southeast Martin Luther King Boulevard, and north of Wheeler Road. Commissioners, the request is to rezone the .39-acre parcel from RSC 6 Residential Single-Family Conventional to RDC 6 Residential Duplex Conventional. The RSC's district permits single-family detached homes. The RDC district would also allow for attached homes, so two-unit attached dwelling units based on the size of the property in the RES 6 plan category. The maximum number of units that can be developed on this parcel is two units, therefore, with no change in the number of units that could be developed. And the change is just effectively providing for, instead of two detached units, allowing for two units in one attached building. Staff did find the request for the RDC compatible with the surrounding development pattern in the area and did recommend approval. It also has recommendations of consistency from the Planning Commission and approval from the hearing officer. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Is the applicant present? Good morning. You have 10 minutes.
Good morning. My name is Julia Perez on PO Box 396, Placeta, Florida 33946. I am here representing Sefner 33584 LLC for a standard rezoning. The existing zoning is RSC 6, and we would like to go to a proposed RDC 6, providing no change in the allowable density. The future land use for this parcel is R6, which would also not, again, not change the density. The parcel is located within the boundaries of Sefner Mango Community Plan. It is within this urban services area. Applicant and I have considered the highest and best use of this property to be an RDC The next portion is directly from the hearing summary. Planning Commission staff found the proposed rezoning would be complementary to the existing development pattern and would promote the vision of Sefner Mango Community Plan by supporting infill development. Transportation has advised us that the county will require a road, an access road via the parcel, via an unbuilt, platted, local roadway named Stanton Avenue, and that borders a property on the north side. Staff review has resulted in no objections. We have found, all have found our request to be approvable, consistent, and compatible, and of course, we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any proponent testimony?
No one in the audience.
How about opponent testimony?
No one in the audience.
Okay, Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, thank you. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located within the Residential 6 Future Land Use category. The site is in the urban service area and also located within the limits of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. The Residential 6 Future Land Use category surrounds the property. Typical uses in this category include residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and mixed-use development. Non-residential uses are required to meet locational criteria. Within the urban service area, parcels are required to meet minimum density as directed by Future Land Use Element Policy 1.2. With approximately .37 acres, the site can be considered for a maximum of two dwelling units. The rezoning request meets that minimum density requirement. Future Land Use Element Policy 16.3 requires development and redevelopment to be integrated through the use of complementary land uses. The request for residential duplex conventional 6 zoning would be complementary to the existing development pattern, as there is existing RDC 6 zoning located northeast of the site, just north of County Road 574. The request would also further and promote the vision of the Sefner Mango Community Plan by supporting infill development. Overall, staff finds that the proposed use would facilitate growth within the urban service area and supports the vision of the community plan. The rezoning would allow for development that is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan, and the request is compatible with the existing development pattern found within the surrounding area. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing Master?
The Hearing Master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject property, which consists of approximately .39 acres on Highway Road north of Looking Glass Court in the Sefner area. The property is zoned Residential 6 on the Future Land Use map and zoned RSC 6. The property is also located within the boundaries of the Sefner Mango Community Plan within the urban services area. The zoning Hearing Master found that the general area surrounding the subject property consists of single-family residential uses. Adjacent properties include a residential subdivision to the east and a property owner's association common area to the south, both zoned Plan Development 01-349. North of the subject property is an unimproved right-of-way and a property zoned RSC 6, developed with a single-family home. To the west, across Highway Road, are properties zoned AS 1 and ASC 1, some vacant and others developed with single-family homes. The zoning Hearing Master stated that the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to residential duplex conventional RDC 6, which will allow single-family and two-family uses. The zoning Hearing Master stated that Development Services staff found the proposed rezoning compatible with the existing zoning and development pattern in the area. Staff found the request approvable. As the board has heard from Ms. Leinhart, Planning Commission staff found the proposed rezoning would be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. The zoning Hearing Master concluded in her report that the proposed rezoning request is in compliance with and does further the intent of the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. And the zoning Hearing Master recommended approval of the rezoning request.
Thank you. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you, Chair. Just for the sake of clarity and removing lawyer speak, I want to confirm that there was always intended to be this exact same amount of residential units on this exact same property. It just hadn't been done yet, and there's no increase to that.
Commissioner, the planned density on this parcel is six units per acre. It's zoned for six units per acre. The size of the parcel could allow a parcel split to have two single-family homes. The request would be for a one duplex on the same lot, and the result of that is no net increase in the number of homes.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Of approval?
Second. Motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Owen. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, now we're at the G part of our agenda, related items. Mr. Grady?
Yes, the next items are related items G1A and G1B. G1A is a vacate petition. Carrie Allen brought a presentation regarding that application, and G1B is rezoning application 22-0692, related to, which incorporates the area that's part of the vacation. After conclusion of Ms. Allen's presentation on the vacating petition, I will provide a brief overview of the rezoning application. Thank you.
Okay, it's my understanding a public hearing will be required for G1A, followed by oral argument on G1B, and then we'll take a combined vote on both items at the conclusion of G1B. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allen?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carrie Allen, Facilities Management and Real Estate Services Department. Item G1A today is vacate ID V22-0018. This is a petition by AC Tanner LLC to vacate a portion of an unimproved public right-of-way known as East Old Hillsborough Avenue. This was created per Commissioners Minute Book S., page 330 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. The petitioner has submitted this vacate request in support of the redevelopment of the Tanner West Plan Development rezoning project. The proposed vacate area is generally located south of east US Highway 19, east of north Falkenburg Road, and west of Interstate 75 in East Lake Orient Park. The vacate area consists of approximately 69,005 square feet, or 1.58 acres. This petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone, is anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, Jake Kramer here for the applicant. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, number 2100. Mr. Chair, essentially, this item will allow for this rezoning to proceed. My client owns the properties on both sides of this right-of-way, and vacating it will allow us to combine the parcels for this economic development project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Anyone else signed up for G1A?
No one in the audience.
Okay, and we'll defer vote until after G1B. Mr. Gormley, do you want to make any comments?
We have Mr. Brady speak to G1B. This is a regular rezoning. It has all recommendations of support.
Yes, G1B is a request to rezone the 27.8-acre parcel, which is, as indicated in Ms. Allen's presentation, northwest on the south side of US 92, west of I-75. The request is for 380,000 square feet of warehouse wholesale distribution, management, fashion, and process and production. Per the site plan, the use is going to be located in two buildings with access to US 92. Emergency access is being provided to Tanner Road to the south. Given the surrounding land uses in the UMU 20 land use category, staff did find this compatible with surrounding development pattern in the area. It was found consistent by the Planning Commission and was recommended approval by the zoning Hearing Master. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Is the applicant present? Good morning.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Jake Kramer again here. This project is an economic development project, along with its companion project that the board unanimously approved on the east side of the interstate a few months ago. We're expecting to bring 1,100 jobs to the region, and this is a $95 million capital investment in the community. The project is within UMU 20, which is one of your most intense land use categories. We also reviewed the East Lake Community Plan. That plan specifically directs jobs growth to this particular area of the county, so we believe this is the right area for an economic development project. We have all recommendations of approval, and again, a similar project was approved by the board just a few months ago, the companion project. We did have one citizen come to ZHM with questions, and since then, we've answered those questions and have that citizen's support. So with that, we'd ask for your approval, and our team is online if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any proponent testimony?
Seeing no one in the room.
Any opponent testimony?
No one in the room.
And Planning Commission?
Thank you, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use 20, or UMU 20 Future Land Use category. The site is located in the urban service area and also within the limits of the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan. The intent of the UMU 20 Future Land Use category is to designate areas that are urban in intensity and density of uses. Typical uses are residential, regional-scale commercial uses, and business park uses, light industrial, and mixed-use projects. The subject site is surrounded on the west and south by the UMU Future Land Use category. Further to the east is Interstate 75 and the public quasi-public Future Land Use category. To the north are properties designated as Community Mixed Use 12. The subject site is in the urban service area where, according to Objective 1 of the Future Land Use element, 80% of the county's growth is to be directed. future land use element, 80% of the county's growth is to be directed. Policy 1.4 requires that all new developments be compatible with the surrounding area, noting that compatibility does not mean the same as. Rather, it refers to the sensitivity of development proposals in maintaining the character of existing development. The proposed plan development is compatible with the existing character and development of the area. Surrounding uses include heavy and light commercial, vacant properties, single-family detached residential, mobile home parks, and agricultural lands. Objective 8 and Policy 8.1 of the future land use element outline the maximum level of intensity or density and range of permitted land uses that are allowed and planned for each area and with the character of each land use category. The proposed plan development for an industrial warehouse use meets the intent of the UMU 20 future land use category. The site plan shows an FAR, a floor area ratio, of .33, which is well below the 1.0 FAR that is allowed for consideration in this category. The proposed rezoning also meets the intent of the neighborhood protection policies in the future land use element that modify Objective 16, specifically regarding the placement of non-residential uses and the gradual transition between unlike uses. Properties in the UMU 20 future land use category are not subject to commercial locational criteria. The proposed use is comparable to the established development pattern, which includes other light industrial uses. The subject site also meets the intent of the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan by supporting economic development and job growth. And based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions proposed by Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing master?
The zoning hearing master reviewed the applicant's request to rezone the property to plan development to allow for a maximum of 380,000 square feet of warehousing, wholesale distribution, manufacturing, processing, and production uses within two structures. The property consists of nine parcels with a total of approximately 27.8 acres on East US Highway 92, at the southwest corner of East US 92 and the intersection of I-4 and The applicant's site plan includes the Old Hillsborough Avenue right-of-way within the proposed plan development, and site plan note 9 states, "The existing Old Hillsborough Avenue right-of-way is within the project boundary, and vacating of the right-of-way is requested." The Transportation Department's Agency Review Comment Sheet states, "An unimproved section of Old Hillsborough Avenue right-of-way traverses the property," and the applicant has submitted a petition to vacate this right-of-way. The zoning hearing master considered the area surrounding the subject property and found that it includes a mix of residential and commercial uses. Adjacent properties to the west include single-family homes, mobile home, and RV park, and an auto repair and service use. Tanner Road is adjacent to the south of the subject property, and single-family homes are located south of Tanner Road. US Highway 92 is adjacent to the north, and commercial uses are located north of Highway 92, with I-75 adjacent to the west of the property. The zoning hearing master stated that the Development Services Department staff has found the proposed plan development rezoning compatible and approvable with conditions based on the applicant's general site plan submitted in August 2022. As the board has heard from Ms. Leinhard, the Planning Commission has found the application to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning hearing master concluded the report by finding that the proposed plan development rezoning request is in compliance with and furthers the intent of the goals, objectives, and policies of the Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you, Chair. I just want confirmation from staff on one thing. It says that this is going to produce a net increase of 1,234 ridership per day. And then right below it, it says that that's going to be alleviated by an increase to both Hillsborough and FDOT in the vicinity. Do we know if there's any alignment on when those increases of roadways are going to happen, or is that a very far off?
I believe it is in the nearer future, but I don't, we don't have an alignment currently of that FDOT work program with this, with this project, but we can get that information for you.
Just, it's probably important that we make sure that if we're going to increase this much traffic on roads that are already to the brim, having some kind of concurrency in future roadways would be helpful. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I just typically, I'll just say for the record, I always look very closely at any vacating of road possibility, however, considering the circumstances in this. And of course, we've got 75 there, which vacated a lot of connectivity and roads through it, as the big interstates will. And just north of that is Old Hillsborough, which is, runs across between the counties. So I just was pointing that out, but I'll be supporting this.
Commissioner Owen?
An emergency access will still be available after vacating, correct?
That's correct. The vacating on the north will not affect the emergency access that will be provided.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so Commissioner Kemp, is that a motion for G 1A, G 1B?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. And second, Commissioner Owen. No other comments? Please record your vote for G 1A and G 1B.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right, thank you. I know we have two staff items and also Commissioner Owen's item. Which one do we, are we taking first?
It's to the board's pleasure. I'm available to introduce items.
I'm okay taking mine first. It's, it'll be quick. Well, my item just related to the lawsuit in Leon County, where Robert Emerson is the plaintiff, and all I was asking for was a memorandum, just to kind of get up to speed and see what was going on in the case, a motion to dismiss is filed, and I really don't want to talk strategy here in a boardroom because that's up to the lawyers. But they did provide me what I, what I wanted, just to see status and really get a good understanding on what the impact would be of a motion to dismiss. One thing I was concerned on was attorney's fees and costs. Are we paying them? Or, and I don't think that's going to be the case. So it's a motion to dismiss. We don't know if it'll get dismissed at that point or not, but, but the memorandum really cleared some things up for me, so I'm, I'm good.
Great. All right, thank you, Commissioner Owen. Mr. Gormly?
Thank you, Commissioners. The last two items on the regular agenda are I-1 and I-2. I-1 and I-2 are related items, and they both relate to the provision of water and wastewater service to the Two Rivers Project. A Two Rivers Project is on the north boundary of Hillsborough County, actually bounds Pasco County on the north and 301 on the east. It's approximately a 2,000-acre development that's approved for 972 residential units, as well as about 45,000 square feet of commercial. The Two Rivers Project is in a Comprehensive Plan category, Plan Environmental Community 1/2, that requires that public water and wastewater be provided to the project. Well and septic service is not an option for the project. The, the plan development zoning for this project further provides that water and wastewater service would be provided either by Hillsborough County or by the city of Tampa, and that structure is consistent with, with the board's Comprehensive Plan. Currently, the, the city of Tampa has Two Rivers within its service area. However, the city of Tampa does not have infrastructure in the vicinity of the project that would allow it to be efficiently serviced. Likewise, Hillsborough County does not have infrastructure in that, in that area, being on the north side of, of the county. So we have two items before the board today. Item I-1 is an agreement with the city of Tampa that would amend the utility service boundaries to allow this portion of unincorporated Hillsborough County to be served by unincorporated Hillsborough County rather than the city of Tampa. That, that would be item I-1. Item I-2 is an agreement with Pasco County, and, but the terms of this agreement would have the county bulk purchase water and wastewater services from Pasco County. The county would then, that would be a metered connection for the county, and we would pay Pasco County based on that consumption. We would then use that service to, to serve the Two Rivers Projects as Hillsborough County utility customers. There will, there will be not Pasco County customers, these will be Hillsborough County customers in unincorporated Hillsborough County. The cost for this service will be borne, won by the developer, constructing the infrastructure to bring the bulk services from Pasco to unincorporated county and to send the effluent back for treatment in Pasco County. And the cost of the purchase of the water services will be incorporated in the utility rates that, that, that are established for water and wastewater service. We believe that this is a good method of serving this project. It's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan that calls for service in the unincorporated county to be either by Hillsborough County or a, or a jurisdiction with a pre-existing service agreement, not other counties serving unincorporated. And we believe it is a cost-neutral arrangement for the county, and we believe the most cost-effective and efficient way of serving this project, all things considered. So that is item I-1. And I-2, we recommend them both for approval. They, they are separate items, but they are companion, and that both need to be approved for this arrangement to, to move forward. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormly. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Adam. So let's say this weren't approved. What would the alternatives be under the circumstances? They would either have to go on septic, or, which they're not allowed to do, but that would be, or they would have to pay a huge amount of money to hook up to the city or the county?
It, that's correct. Septic would, under the current structure, is, is not an option. They could not develop on septic. So the only other alternative would be to run lines either from the city or the county. And to you from the county's standpoint, it is, it is a very long and expensive run and operationally inefficient to have such a long line serving a, a single project. So we did look at that option, and, and it was determined to be not, not cost feasible or efficient, either from the county or the city's perspective, to provide the services. The city, I'm sorry, Pasco County does have a companion development right across the, the border on Pasco County's side, and they are bringing water and wastewater service to that point. So it will be very proximate to the county line and to serving the Two Rivers development.
Thank you. I, I see there are other commissioners in the queue, but I, I will make a motion to approve these two items.
Second.
Okay, the motion's going to be for I-1, for the amendment, the interlocal. We have to, I think, vote on them separately. Yep. So the motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, my question goes to, I don't think we've really done this before, though, right? Is this kind of pioneering for us?
This is, this is pioneering. This is new for us, yes.
And it looks like, when I look at the agreements, obviously this is a creature established, a statute for these cooperative agreements, but metering tends to be the, the possible issue, is properly metering, and they're going to send us an invoice within 45 days. We have to pay it within 45 days?
I believe that's the term.
Okay. And then, because it does show some pretty, some penalties in there, but it doesn't really explain what those penalties are. That was my only confusion late last night when I was really looking at it, so.
And Commissioner, I just amend one, one, one response. The, the idea of having this development in this area that's served by utilities is unique for the county. We do have one other instance where we have an arrangement with Pasco County for bulk purchase of water. It's to serve a shopping center on Livingston Avenue and County Line Road that has a new Publix coming in, and that was an agreement that was, it was approved some time ago, I believe in the 90s, but it is, we do have some experience with, with this interaction with, with Pasco County.
Yeah, so we, so, so this isn't, this may be new, this situation, but we have the processes in place to handle this.
On the logistics side of the purchase, yes, sir.
Yeah, good, good, good. Because I see that they can do rate increases, but they have to give us three months prior to doing a rate increase. So, yeah, I'll, I'll second it as well.
Commissioner Walstall?
You can move your chair.
Okay. All right, we are required to ask for public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to item I-1?
Members of the commission, just briefly, Michael Brooks with the record, 400 North Tampa Street, Suite 1910, Tampa, I-62. I'm here on behalf of the Two Rivers property owner. Mr. Robert Thomas is here in the audience with us. I think one of the things, Adam did a great job of summarizing, but I want to point out that Two Rivers is, is a subdivision that actually straddles the county line. So Pasco will be providing water and sewer service to the, to the portion of the Two Rivers Project that is north of the county line, and this, these two items would allow for that to extend to the south as well. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion to approve I-1 by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Owen. Please record your vote.
Seven is zero.
Can we have a motion for I-2?
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, for the interlocal bulk water and wastewater agreement with Pasco. Again, would anyone like to speak to this item? Looks like no one, so please record your vote.
Seven is zero.
Thank you. And Mr. Gormly, you said that you may have future issues or?
Yes, I believe we do have a, a future issue that Commissioner Owen would like to raise at this point in the agenda.
Yes, I would. May be recognized?
Yes, sir.
This concerns the December 15th, 2022 Land Development Code text amendment, or amendments. We got three new commissioners on this board, and as I was taking a deep dive into these changes, I noticed that these changes are, they're pretty substantive changes. And I know you all worked really hard on this and done workshops. But for me personally, I really, especially on the ZHM issue, because it seems to me like we're taking really a lot, a lot of power away from the ZHM. And for me, I would, I would love an opportunity, I don't know how the new commissioners feel about this, is to have our, have a workshop, even if it was just on the ZHM component. The other two issues, I think, kind of speak for themselves, but I know you all have worked hard on this, but where we're at right now, being kind of thrown into the fire on this, I would, I personally would, would like to request, and I think it's okay for me to make a motion today, if we can, if we can cancel that, the meeting coming up, just as it pertains to the Land Development Code text amendments this week, schedule it for another date, and give us an opportunity to possibly have a workshop on it. So I'll formally make a motion that the public hearing for the scheduled LDC amendments on Thursday, December 15th, 2022, at 6:00 PM is not held, and that a workshop is held so the new board can have the, new board members can have the opportunity to get a better understanding of the LDC amendments as proposed on the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Walstall, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, is that in order? Because I've not heard of motions being made during future items, so I'm concerned about that. Also, the fact that this is agendted and noticed, I just, from legally, I mean, is that, to me, that's not in order to be recognized in the way we proceed.
If I could address the public hearing part, I think with the board's motion, so there's no ability today to continue that Thursday to a separate date. But what I understand the motion is, is to not hold the public hearing and schedule a workshop. So I, I don't think that we have any notice issues with, with scheduling that workshop, and I believe the intent here is to avoid people showing up on Thursday night for, for amendments that, that wouldn't be heard. I believe that's, that's part of the intent of raising the issue today.
The challenge, or the, the situation we're in here is, Commissioner Kemp's right, on a regular agenda, when we have future issues, we do not take action. We, we're not supposed to have discussion, although sometimes we tend to drift that way. It's just supposed to be, bring an issue up, direct staff to bring something back. We actually don't have a future issues portion of this agenda. So that's why I'm, you know, we just want to make sure that there are no legal or policy impediments or that would, you know, restrict us from, from taking this action.
Commissioners, I'm not aware of any limit on taking the action that's being proposed during this portion of the land use meeting, based on the board's procedures and rules.
So would, would staff be coming back to us on a date for having this workshop?
Yes, we would work with. Sorry, we would work with the offices to establish a, a date for the workshop, and this motion passes, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen?
So I just have a question of clarification related to tomorrow night. This is not the only thing that we were taking up tomorrow night.
Correct.
So just to be clear, the hearing itself is not canceled in the sense that we'll still be taking up the other items tomorrow night that are on the agenda, including some, some companion some companion rezonings and things like that.
Yes, sir. On Thursday, there are two public hearings scheduled. The one that was, that is not addressed by this is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment public hearing with the two companion rezonings.
And that'll still go forward?
That will still go forward.
Okay, just so people are clear on that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wollstill. If no other comments, please accord your vote.
Five to two. Commissioner Kemp and Myers voted no.
Okay. Mr. Gormly, do you have any other items?
No, sir. That completes our agenda.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned. All right, Commissioner Myers?
I wanted to make an emotion, what we just did. How would that affect us going forward for the future? That we make changes at our land use meeting without really noticing the public? And then we have a workshop on tomorrow day, you know, to cover these same items? I'm, I'm just concerned how it looks for us as a board going forward.
So we, we would schedule a, a future workshop on the Land Development Code amendments. Tomorrow's workshop is on, on the Uncomprehensive Plan Amendment, so this would be a new one calendar. In terms of, of the motion itself, the, the alternative would be have people show up Thursday night and decide not to take action and defer. So I, I think the intent here, and, and I'd say, the Land Development Code schedule was structured to not have the new Commissioners be in, in the position of coming in mid, mid, mid-round of amendments. The, the round was scheduled to conclude with the old Board due to one of the storms. We had to cancel one of the public hearings, and that moved the whole schedule up. So I'd say that this is a, this is a atypical situation, one that we tried to avoid through scheduling, but because of matters beyond our control, we have the, the new Commissioners who are faced with, with, have amendments that have been discussed.
So as we move forward, whatever the three new Commissioners need to be brought up to speed with, so we don't make changes, let's go ahead and add those and get them, get them where they'd be acclimated to, to discuss whatever items coming before us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wollstill?
That clears up my statement, Chair. Thank you.
All right. I mean, it just sounds like this is a, a unique situation that shouldn't, shouldn't happen in the future.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No other comments? We're adjourned.